Call the meeting to order. Welcome to everybody. Thank you for joining us today. We do have a quorum at the moment. We are six appointed board members. Four of us are here present in the room. And Joe O'Connor is joining us by telephone. Joe, can you hear me?
I can.
Wonderful, welcome.
Can folks hear me?
Everybody hear Joe?
I can hear you, Joe.
Okay, good.
Just speak up if you want to say something, okay?
Okay, I will.
All right.
I apologize. I've been exposed to COVID through my cousins, so that's why I'm not there.
Well, we appreciate you taking care of us.
Okay, okay.
All right, and our chairwoman has also has some personal things that she needs to attend to today with her family. So that's why I will be chairing this meeting. So thank you for your patience with me. All right, the first order of business is a consideration of agenda amendments. Does anyone have any amendments to the agenda? Not seeing any. I'll look for a motion to accept the agenda for today's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, the agenda has been approved. Moving on, we'll go to citizens' time. I don't have any cards today, do I? No? Okay, would anybody from the public like to say something? All right, moving on. We'll then go ahead and move past the board response to citizens' time and move on to the consideration of the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have the approval of the draft minutes from November 20th, 2024 Board of Trustee meeting. We have the acceptance of the November-December 2024 Board Financial Report. We have the acceptance of the November 2024 warrants and the December 2024 warrants. We have the acceptance of the November to December 2024 monthly deposit record. And we have the acceptance of the November to December 2024 fund schedule. Do we have any questions regarding those? Or before we approach your idea of question?
On the warrants for December of '24, I just have a question about the EBSCO. I think this one is, is that an annual payment? The $12,000?
They are. That's our magazine subscriptions.
EBSCO?
Yes, ma'am. We pay for them.
I thought that was for like training and such, EBSCO, no?
No. Is it Magster?
Magster is funded by Library Virginia, and that is our digital magazines. These are the magazine subscriptions that are in our branches. In all nine locations.
Gotcha, okay, so that's an annual?
Yes.
Okay, I was just curious about that.
Renewal of all of those magazines.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions while we're talking about some of the bigger amounts. Could you just clarify, Envisionware, what that invoice is for?
Envisionware runs our print and our PC reservation software. So when you go up to Public Computer and you log in, it manages your time. And that also manages our print queue. So when people send their print jobs to the printer, it manages that as well. And our self-check machines are managed through the Envisionware software.
Okay, so that's another yearly cost that we pay at the beginning. And then I saw a new invoice, at least I hadn't noticed it before in December, to News Bank?
It is new.
It is new, okay.
I will get, that is our additional subscription to the Richmond Times-Dispatch that we talked about with our projects for FY '25.
Okay. And then just one other point about the November warrants. I saw there was a West Point invoice in there for $17,000. Are we expecting that that's the last?
That is the final payment.
That's the final payment to West Point for their relocation of their branch?
Yes.
Okay, all right, would it be possible by the next board meeting just to have an overview of kind of what we gave West Point in total? Okay, sure, that'd be great. Okay. All right, is there anything else? All right.
Yes, this is, this is Joe. I do have a comment in regard to the minutes.
Okay.
We had some multiple votes there in regard, and where we had a unanimous decision, it's reported as unanimous decision. And where we had split decisions, it's only reported as amendment passed. I know we did not take a roll call vote, but we should have show that the vote passed, whatever. I don't have it in front of me how many people were there, five to one, five to two. That should be in the minutes. It may be going forward. We need to recognize that when we have split decisions, it's always good to have a roll call vote.
Okay, I do.
I understand the distinction I'm making there.
Yes.
I don't want to, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to ask that we go back and say, this was, this was the roll call vote. A roll call vote has to be taken. That wasn't done. But we should show that the vote was not unanimous and that this was the number of As and As.
Okay, so you're talking, you're talking under Old Business, number 11. B, Hot Spot Discussion, the last motion?
I'm sorry?
Are you talking under the Hot Spot Discussion, under Old Business?
Hot Spot Discussion, yes.
Under Old Business, the second motion that's listed there?
Yeah, I don't have the minutes in front of me.
Okay, yeah. Where it says B Johnson seconded the motion and the motion passed, but it doesn't say unanimously.
Correct.
Correct, okay. Ms. Boyer, do you have some, is that the right way to do it if there is a dissenting voice? Should we always take a roll call vote then?
I think it's a good manner of practice. I mean, I think there have been a pretty extensive discussion, and I think we sort of got caught up in it. And probably when it ended, we just said passed or failed. But I think generally it's not a bad idea because then you do, you know who was for it, who was against. So it's a better practice, yes, I think it's a good practice.
It's this motion.
Okay, Joe, did you hear that from Ms. Boyer?
No, I can't say I did.
Okay, she said that, you're right, that it is a good practice to go ahead and take a roll call vote when we have those kind of votes where there's not full unanimous agreement.
Right.
Yeah.
What I'm asking for, this, this, I'm not asking us to put a roll call in there because we didn't take it.
Yeah.
What I'm asking is that we know the count. Did we put the count in it? So the minutes reflect the actions we took.
Okay, and the count would have been four to one, correct?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, all right. So we'll go ahead and when we pass that motion, when we pass the consent agenda, we need to do it with that amendment to the minutes of adding the motion passed four to one.
Right, and this, and this, I only bring it up as when I read the minutes. This is just something to do going forward.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out, I appreciate it, yeah.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Any additional things regarding the consent agenda?
Even in the case of this one here, this is a split decision. The motion didn't pass, but it was a split decision. And those individuals that voted, yes.
Do you know what the decision was?
I don't know, but it was not unanimous.
To which one are you referring?
The first one.
The one above that?
Your motion.
Oh, I was the only one that was for it. I could tell you that, yeah. Everyone else was against, yeah.
So do we want to go ahead and add that there?
Sure.
I think you should.
All right.
If you often speak up a little when you're talking.
Sorry, Sherita.
Back here, I'm having trouble.
Okay, yeah. All right, so we're gonna add, we're also gonna add, Joe, did you hear that as well, to the motion above the one you were referring to? We're gonna go ahead and say the motion did not pass by one to four then.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, like I said, this is just something I was adding as we go forward.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that.
Oh, sure, sure.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item of business, which is our director's report. Do you want to go ahead and take the phone with you to the podium?
I will take the phone. I'm carrying you with me, Joe. Okay, Madam Vice Chair, everyone's at the board. Good morning, chilly start. Overview of the director's report for really encompassing parts, November, December as well. November, we had a little over 400 new library card registrations, 61,000 items in circulation, and 38,000 plus library visits. There's a site reduction in December, but that's not uncommon with the holidays. 311 new library card registrations, 57,000 plus items circulated, 29,000 library visits. Biblio Stat was finalized and submitted to the Library of Virginia last week. I've noticed, I do, I have a PDF of what was submitted. I'll go ahead and send that out to you all now as well. I, along with Barb Young, I presented to the Hanover Board of Supervisors at their December board meeting. And we focused, Barb Young focused mainly on kind of catching up the board on what's happening, been happening at the library the last six months. And I spoke more about the current FY '25 projects that we talked about. And you all amended the agenda for a couple of months ago. Also yesterday, I presented a presentation to the King William County at their budget work session. I've included the QR code for that presentation, which is available to everyone on our website. There were no questions from the board, but we just talked about branch services and shared services and how the budget was breaking down for FY '26. We also provided them with several options to reduce the cost to King William County next fiscal year. My highlighted, oh, I also responded to several customer inquiries in the month of December, just asking about, that were curious about library services and how things operated at the library, which I was happy to do. Talking about the digital subscription to the Richmond Times-Dispatch. That was one of those items that we were working on for this fiscal year. We did just launch this month. It's available under the Learn and Explore tab on the website, which is where all of our databases are. Scroll down to newspapers.
Who do you want to share with?
You'll see, yes. You'll see the Washington Post, which we had already had, and now you'll see the Richmond Times-Dispatch. So these are current issues as well as archives going back to 1985. And they're available here in the library as well as remotely from home with your library card number.
So we have the Times Dispatch, the Post, New York Times, and Wall Street Journal? Those the four newspapers?
That we have in our branches, but not digitally.
Not digitally.
Correct. The little orbit earth or space thing on the bottom left. I had to cut the screen off, sorry. So this is our main page. We've got the Learn and Explore tab. Or the slider, we have a slider right now as well.
You know, have to wait for the slider if it's not there, you just go to Digital.
The.
Excuse me, not Digital Library, they're an eight slower.
And databases.
Yeah. Scroll down. Hi, it's in Tom Dale's house. It's gonna be there here at the end. Magazines and newspapers, Richmond Times-Dispatch. And that's where you also get to Washington Post in the library. So Richmond Times-Dispatch. Now, it's not showing the place where you put in your barcode number because I'd already been there, but let's see. If I hadn't already gotten in, here you would have the information telling you to put in your barcode number from your library card. And then it takes you to this page. And so you have the choice of looking at the Times Dispatch as an image where you can see the images of the newspaper, which is kind of how I like to look at it. So you can actually see the paper. Or you could look at it in text. But it seems to be, I'm not sure it's actually every single article in the text. That's why I like to look at it in.
Is it available at 5:00 AM, like the, when you get to the library at 5:00 AM, the way it is to?
I do not know the answer to that, but I, we can find that out.
I'm just curious, because I mean, that's when I read it in.
I just wonder, a personal subscription, but I never get my link if I, so you must.
5:00 AM, I'm, 5:01, I read, so, interesting. I'm just curious.
Yeah. That's where that is. And as you can see, it goes back to 1985. Whoops. I should be stepped back where I can see where I'm going. Goes back to 1985 for the text, only back to 2018 for the images. And honestly, I have not explored the blog yet. And then the Web Edition arm goes back to 2018. We don't know yet how well, yes, Joe.
I was gonna say, I believe our sales rep said that there were over 200 searches in News Bank, which he said was a pretty decent start.
200 over what period?
Over, since we launched.
Since we launched.
Right, which would have been right before the holidays. And I'm sure a lot of that, we've sent this out to our staff so that they're well versed in it to share with the customers.
Great, very good.
Is that it?
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Since we're talking about one of the FY '25 projects, we do have the new laptops in. This is new. My battery on my laptop died last week and would not hold a charge. So I'm learning a new laptop. So this is what we have. This will, these will replace our staff laptops as well as we are buying laptops for all of our branches to be able to use for their programming as well. So Chris will, after this one, start imaging those and rolling those out. We have the switches that we talked about, but I think we are still waiting on the wireless access points. We're working with Hanover County to get the early literacy stations purchased as well. Kelly is looking into the museum passes that we talked about. Jeff has already ordered the book storage solutions. We talked about the acrylic displays for the Read Along books. He's ordered kind of one of each. We're gonna send them around to the branches so we can get an exact count of what we, you know, want and need, what fits in the spaces, and be able to make the bulk purchase and get those rolled out. The postage meter is in place in Collection Strategy Department as well. We need to get started on the fleet delivery van. But we are moving forward on several of those projects. At the beginning of the year, we did see some closures in our branches because of the weather. And then the water crisis did affect the Mechanicsville and Atlee branches. We ran out of water at those two locations. So we did end up closing early one day and then closing the full day the next day. It did not impact the Hanover branch because they're on a well system. Learned, learned that during the water crisis. But all of that, we're back open today, full hours, even though the school is closed in Hanover at least. Personnel changes, we didn't actively recruit for open positions in the month of December. Doesn't seem to help with recruitment there. We had four new hires and some separations at the Atlee branch. Almost too many programs to really go through, but some really great ones that are happening throughout the system. I did want to mention, if you saw when you came into Mechanicsville today, the display that's on loan from the Library of Virginia. There are deaf communities here in the state. As well as our partnership with the Daughters of the American Revolution chapter to provide banners on influential historical figures in the state of Virginia. Those banners are circulating throughout our system. Two of them are here at Mechanicsville. They're located kind of in the adult area, so you should check them out on your way out. Those will rotate through our branches for the next year. So everybody will have different ones. They're great. We did a little photo shoot with them, so hopefully there's gonna be a little bit more publicity about that partnership coming through. Gosh, Winter on the Green, Hanover Branch participated with that. We've seen a growing use of the locker service here specifically at Mechanicsville. I did not include, there was an article in the Goochlin Gazette about the lockers in Goochlin. We are, they're having a few people pick up on that, but it's a little bit slower in Goochlin. But here, they said they're having some core folks that are really appreciating that.
Do you want to scan?
That service.
For the month of, for the month of January so far here at Mechanicsville, we've had 26 people using it, picking up 83 different items. So that's pretty good for Mechanicsville. As you said, Goochlin has lagged a bit, and that would be. I shouldn't have had that open before, I have to wait for it now. I'm sorry, I'll have to slide back. Operator, Goochlin is going to be a bit slower. And for so far this month, they've had only sadly, two people using it, but they had 15 materials between us two years.
Thank you. We've had a few facilities issues, HVAC, the, some repairs at multiple branches going on. The signage, the exterior signage at Montpelier was installed as well. And there seems to be a solution for the issues with the fire alarm here at Mechanicsville. I believe that is everything I have. Are there any questions?
Next week, any questions from the board?
No, I was just about the Montpelier branch. The December attendance is off the wall. I mean, that is amazing.
It is.
How important that library is.
It's, you know, a much needed upgrade there for sure.
I'm just curious about the Boyer requests.
Sure.
Is there a specific problem?
I had two requests in the month of December that I responded to, asking about the inquiry about the library's retirement system, what we use for our retirees. And I'm sorry, I would have to go back and look. I'm struggling to think, remind myself about the second one. But I can do that.
That's okay. I was just curious if there was something that was glaring that there was a request.
There was a question about an email that I had sent regarding some budget information for King William County.
Gotcha.
And so I brought it up email.
All right, thank you.
I just had a question about the lighting here in Mechanicsville. Are there any, is it, is it moving forward with facilities or?
I spoke with Remy Graham, who is the deputy director, is the acting director right now for General Services about that. And he is working on taking a look at finding solutions. So I did make a call to get the ball rolling on that.
Okay, so you're happy with how it's rolling?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
So, and I would encourage the board to take a look at the King William budget presentation that Jamie gave yesterday. She did a great job, and I think all of their questions before they had them, so you did a wonderful job, Jamie. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is legal counsel updates. Do you have anything?
I don't have anything from the board today.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is standing committee reports. And we will start with the Finance Committee report.
We will meet, the Finance Committee will meet on Wednesday, December, excuse me, February 12 at 10:00 AM at the Ashland Library.
All right, that's it, that's it, all right. Okay, moving on to the Personnel Committee report.
And the Personnel Committee did not meet this week as we had planned because of personal issues that I had. I apologize for that, but we postponed it for next month. And there's not anything more that I'd like to talk about today. But that's moving.
Is there a date for next month or not yet?
I think I'm looking to do it before the board meeting next.
Next month, okay.
I'm sorry, this is Joe. I couldn't, I couldn't hear the last part of it. Do we have a date?
Yeah, I tend to believe think we're going to do it before the board meeting next month.
Oh, before the board meeting, okay.
Right, an hour before.
So at the 9:00 AM time slot?
Right.
Oh, just before the board meeting? Okay, that's fine, that's fine. Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, then moving on to the next order of business, we have Old Business, and we're gonna look at some of our policy work. In your packet that you received today, at the back, there are three pages that are stapled together. And on top of that is the standard policy format with January 2025. This is something that we discussed at the board workshop, I believe, back in November. Since that time, there have been a couple of changes, as Ms. Boyer looked through it for us and helped us kind of simplify it even more. So this is the standard policy format we want to look for as we work on all of our policies. Are there any questions about that? Go ahead and just say, we're gonna have obviously a title, we're gonna have a purpose, definitions, requirements, implementation, and applicable law. And just to note down there at the bottom, not all of the listed sections will be required for all policies. So the two policies that are attached have been put into that format. You can actually see on the very first one, the confidentiality of library records. There is just a purpose, a requirements, and an applicable law section because the others were determined not to be needed. So that's just an example of how it will actually look. And then obviously, the next one, the customer expectation. And then obviously, the next one, the customer expectations, one which we've been working on for a number of months, has all of those sections, purpose, definition, requirements, implementation, but does not have the applicable law one, which is the last section. Are there any questions about the standard policy format here? Is that something we need to pass with a motion, Ms. Boyer?
Yes.
Should we do that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So I'm looking for a motion to go ahead and approve the Pumunki Regional Library Policy Standard Policy Format.
So moved. I second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, that has passed, so we now have our standard policy format. Let's go ahead and move on to the confidentiality of library records policy, which is the second page in your packet. This is one that we started working on in April of last year, so it's good to finally see it here. Ms. Boyer helped us kind of simplify this a little bit. When we looked at it the last time, we had requirements and implementation, and she really felt like those were just kind of overlapping each other and saying the same information. So we've consolidated that all into the requirements. There's really nothing new that's being said here. It's just a simplification of what we had put forward before. Are there any questions about the confidentiality of library records policy?
Yes. I know in our last meeting that we had suggested library staff replace the word staff, but under two B and C, it's still staff. Is that something we want to change or? I didn't know.
Looks like we have it that under A, correct?
We have it under A, but not under B and C.
I'm going to plug in and make the charges live.
Okay, that's great. Because I'd really like to see us pass this policy. I don't really want to see it again.
So with that change, having library twice, B and C?
Correct.
All right. Thank you for reminding me, too.
Joe, did you follow that change we'd like to make?
I was having a hard time hearing the last little piece of it. I read it, it looked good.
Okay, so the only thing is, they want, we want to, under B and C, in front of staff, we just want to clarify and put library staff. It's not a big change. We're just changing staff to library staff in all instances.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions or comments about this policy? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the confidentiality of library records policy.
Moved.
Yes, I second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. The confidentiality of library records policy has passed. All right. Let's move on to the customer expectation policy, expectations policy. Are there any questions regarding this policy or comments?
Yes. Once again, library staff under purpose. I was looking at, I now can't. Wait. Yes. Well, under purpose, it just says staff. Yeah. I mean, we want to say. Well, we had mentioned everything should say library staff, so.
Okay.
It's up to you guys. Just didn't know if you want to be consistent.
Yep.
Must be consistent.
Yep.
The other thing is that number three, under requirements, number five, we had mentioned at the last meeting that we were to replace library premises with all library facilities and properties, but that's not on this.
Yeah, I think we only changed it there at the top, under the requirement, but yeah.
And the last thing I would mention is under Roman numeral four, implementation, again, the staff issue. It just says staff under B, D, E, F, and G.
Okay.
We want to do library staff. I mean, those are pretty things.
Yep. No, thank you for pointing that out. Yep.
Can we approve with those changes?
Yes, I believe we can.
Can we go back to the previous change on the library staff when that was in?
That was in, under requirements, A point five.
Okay.
That we changed where it just says library premises.
Okay.
Now, above, we've said within any library facility or on any library grounds. At the bottom of that, I don't know if we want to just repeat that.
The one in the purpose that says library facilities and property.
Library facilities and property.
Why not use that?
We had said before in the last notes of our last meeting to replace with, to replace with library facilities and properties wherever it mentioned library premises.
Right.
Okay.
Just to be clear.
Well... Can you read that to me one more time?
Sure.
We said we would change it to.
Yep. All library facilities and properties are to replace where it says library premises.
All right. So I would suggest then that under the requirements section, that first little paragraph, that we go ahead and take off or on any library grounds and make it consistent there as well. Is that clear?
Property, we replace grounds?
We, yeah.
Yeah, make them the same.
That we keep the same language.
Yeah.
And then down under number five, that we also put...
Facility.
PRL will not assume responsibility for children or others who cannot be responsible for themselves, who are unattended.
Is that problematic to say property when the library doesn't technically own the property? I just, you know, for, so if Hannah McCaddie owned property...
You're planning to change premises to property?
It's just that we've referred to it as property, grounds, and premises, all within this one page. Is there a way we should use?
I think premises, because I think there is an implicit, excuse me, I think there is an implicit assumption of ownership in the word property. Can we just make it premises?
Premises?
Yeah.
Put it right up there. Make this a premises.
And remember that premises typically is a, I mean, I'm just trying to think if they would ever be accessing resources that weren't on premises, but I don't think so. I think premises will cover it. Library premises.
Okay, so going back. Where did you see?
Jamie, does that address your question?
It does. Yes, thank you.
And does premises, from your experience, does that capture everything pretty much?
It does.
Okay. I do think that would be a better change.
Okay, so from my position, under purpose, the last sentence, we're going to change it to say as well as of library facilities and premises rather than property. In the first small sentence, under requirements, we are going to change it from saying within any library facility or on any library grounds to the word premises. So it would be on or any library premises. The one in five, we're going to leave because it already says premises. And then in, under requirements, B, where it says any threatening, obscene, abusive, or sexual language or acts directed towards library staff, whether on or off library premises, or other customers, are unacceptable. So those are the three incidences that we will change that.
Ms. Schumacher?
Yes.
Under definitions, it says library facilities, so should we change that as well?
Thank you, Ms. Bradby. Yes, we should.
Under two definitions?
So there's a fourth place, under definitions, where it will now state customer means any person who enters library facilities or premises. All right. Joe, were you able to follow that? We're basically just changing all the sections to say premises rather than the other word choices that we had.
Right. That seems the right way to do it to me.
Okay.
It makes it universal, so.
There's one in implementation F.
Okay.
Facilities and property.
Okay. So there is another place under Roman numeral four, implementation F, where it says that it may result in the customer being barred from all library facilities and property. We will change that to premises as well.
If you're, if you said this one, what was she talking about? These requirements?
Okay, looks like through the end, we continue to say premises, so. So that's, the one change is to say premises in those locations where I noted. And then we are also going to add the word library before the word staff under implementation points D, E, F, and G1.
It was also B.
And B as well?
Yeah, there's eight. There's eight instances.
Eight instances. Okay, so B needs a library. Where are the other? I see five that I've listed here.
I'm just going to count up here. Just anywhere the word staff is appears, just through a library. I wonder if they got...
Okay, so there's eight instances. Are you able to find those, Jamie, or?
I just went ahead and defined it.
Okay.
I think it's a, and I believe now.
Did you have, okay, she's actually highlighted.
Did you get paid as well?
She's highlighted the places they're on. Although, in one instance, in a couple of instances, it says, it already says, library staff members, so it's not going to be eight. But basically, wherever you see...
I had it was B, D, E, I, and G.
B, D, E.
I, and G. Yeah, that's what I have.
F and G.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so wherever we...
I couldn't read my writing.
I've got eight results for staff and L, all of them are library.
Okay, great. So we've changed all staff. Wherever it says staff, we've changed that to library staff to be consistent.
Right.
Okay? So it sounds like a lot of changes, but it's really not a lot of changes. We're just changing staff to library staff, and we're changing anywhere that we refer to the library facilities to premises as well.
These are simply changes for consistency.
Yeah, not substantive.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. Work done.
Thank you for bringing those to our attention, Sharon. I appreciate it. All right. Are there any other questions about this policy or concerns? All right. So I will ask for a motion to approve the Pumunki Regional Library Customer Expectations Policy.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, seeing none, we have a unanimous vote on the customer expectations policy. And I know this is a policy that staff has wanted to have in place for a long time, so we're excited to see it actually happen. So one of the things within the policy that we passed in the implementation is that a copy of the customer expectations outlined in part three of this policy will be posted in a conspicuous location within each branch. So I know that you have some creative ideas on how to do that in a way that's not just a list for people to look at, so I'm excited to see that.
Yes, we will work on that and present that to you all. In the meantime, we'll work to get this out onto the website as soon as possible. It will likely be independent links on the policy page.
Yeah.
And then we'll alter the rest of the library policy to remove those policies that have been replaced.
Pieces.
The other thing, there is in our current library policy, the revocation and denial of service policy that's towards the end of the policy manual, that really is addressed in this new customer expectation. So I think that policy could be removed from the library policy since it was incorporated into the customer service.
Are there any other reasons beyond what's in this customer expectation policy that you would revoke or deny services to someone? No?
No.
Okay. Not returning books, or, I mean, we haven't addressed any of that. Fines, is that covered somewhere else in?
It is in the section of implementation that talks about revoking or suspending of privilege. That is automatically kind of done through the, you know, if somebody's fines get over $5, their ability to use their card to check out materials is suspended, is somewhat incorporated into this piece here.
Ms. Boyer, if we are suggesting that we remove a piece of our policy because this replaces it, do we need to vote on that, or is that just?
So you're going to have, this policy will replace another one.
We're suggesting it replace two other ones. Well, correct?
Right. The customer service and safety and the revocation and denial of service.
Then you just want to repeal those two and then move to approve this one in their place.
Okay. Well, we approved this one already. Should we approve, should we now have a motion to separately remove those two, or should we?
Yes, just...
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so I need a motion to go ahead and withdraw the old customer and customer service and safety policy as well as the revocation and denial of services policy.
I see.
Second?
Yes.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, seeing none, those have been removed from our policy. One thing that I just want to mention is that we have decided at this point just to pass these policies as standalone policies, which means that we are not going to try to integrate them into the document that we presently are working with. But we need to decide as we move forward how we want to organize our policies. So instead of slowing this down in the process of trying to decide how to organize our policies, we wanted to go ahead and pass these. But we still need to address the issue of how we're going to organize our policies. After the November board meeting, Ms. Young did send out kind of her suggestion of how we should organize policies. So maybe we can go ahead and take a look at that at our February board meeting and make a decision about moving forward there. That's really her work, so I don't really want to step on her toes. So, all right, any other questions? Items under old business? All right, we'll move ahead to new business, item 12. Anybody have any new business? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to other business.
I do. Okay. I just wanted to bring for the record to your attention, at our last meeting in November, this particular sheet was passed out by Fran Frymark. And this is the Commonwealth Connection map that she referenced at the November 20th meeting. I wanted to bring clarification. I reached out to Lonnie Hamilton III, who was a broadband planner at the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development. And he confirmed on November 21st, 2024, that this website and this particular picture reflected broadband coverage data as of December 31st. as of December 31st, 2023. So that was almost a year ago when you viewed this, so this was not accurate information. Just wanted to let you know that, okay? Just to bring it to your attention.
Thank you.
And I had another question, if that's okay?
Yeah.
At our last meeting also, when we were discussing the hotspots, Jamie, I know you had offered to look into whether people outside of our service area are using or checking them out. Have you had a chance to do that?
I have not.
Okay.
I, I.
Just wanted to.
I, I need to follow up on that. However, because we don't poll, we don't have access to unique users, which, whether they are outside of our service area, like in Raco County, that information is included in their record. So I'm, I, I need to see, it really kind of is more of a follow up on whether we can access unique.
Tracking.
Right, if we can track on unique users.
I know you don't have access to what people have taken out in the past, but there is a substantial hold population on each of those things. Is that something, I don't know how clear that is, where somebody is located. Is it just a name that you have access to on like a hold list, for example? I mean, that would help give you a little bit of a picture of where people are coming from to access. Anyway, just to throw that in the mix, I just wondered if that wasn't going to be a better source of information. All right, any other business we need to address? All right, seeing none, then I will look for a motion to adjourn our meeting until?
So moved.
When is our next meeting?
February 26th. However, there is a finance committee meeting.
The 12th, on February 12th.
Thank you.
So we have a finance committee meeting on February 12th at 10:00 AM in Ashland. And then our next board meeting is on February 22nd?
26th.
26th, thank you.
And those updates are on the schedule on the website.
Okay, and where is our meeting on the 26th?
Looks like it's in Ashland.
In Ashland, okay.
I would say February 26th is at?
Ashland?
It's Ashland.
Ashland, I thought it was in the 100, actually. I know I have this information, but I'm just checking.
All right, so can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Mr. Johnson, second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Yeah, aye.
All right, seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Kristy, Kristy did a very nice job.